Are the prices gonna drop that much?
I think square one.
Just a little lever?
No.
The one that spoke at something last time?
Lindsay.
I can't remember. Square one, I think.
Brunette glasses?
Yes.
Yeah, she's, uh, yeah, that was Wayne Ferguson's daughter.
I would never guess that.
She looks totally different.
She lives down the street from her. I wave when her car goes by. It is seven o'clock. We do have a formal call city council meeting in order. First items on the agenda is the invocation given by Councilman Grinna and then the place, both the American and Texas flag led by Councilman Vaughn.
You stand with me, please, and bow. Dearly Father, we come before you today, Lord, asking for wisdom and knowledge to, and your guidance, Lord, to help us make the right decisions, that's best for all. Lord, we appreciate everything you've done for us, Lord, and we ask that you bless the city of Louisville and that you watch out for those that are out there, our citizens, those who come and visit us here, that Louisville would be a great and safe city. Protect those that serve us, whether they be here locally, our local fire and police, or those that fight for this country abroad. And, Lord, we ask that you bless America again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one state, under God, one and one indivisible.
Next item on agenda is public hearing, consideration of ordinance for zone change request from light industrial to estate townhouse on 21.3 acres located south of Vista Ridge Mall Drive, approximately 250 feet west of Denton Tap Road, further identified as High Point Oaks, Lot 1, Block B, as requested by High Point Oaks Limited, the property owner. Property is located on southwest quadrant of Denton Tap, southwest quadrant of Denton Tap Road and Vista Ridge Mall Drive, city's southern boundary. Property surrounding the site to the east, west, and north is zone light industrial. Capel Greens, a subdivision dividing, a subdivision containing 226 single-family residents, is located immediately south of the site within the city. Capel Gen Home Homes is request, is proposing 86 residential lots that will exceed the minimum lot size requirement for ETH and will offer a variety of housing plans ranging from 2,000 to 3,200 square feet. Pricing for the project is supposed to start in the mid $200,000 to the low $300,000 in line with surrounding homes in Capel. Planning zoning commission unanimously voted 7-0 to approve the request at the meeting on October 23rd, 2012. Do have a card here, Mr. Tom John. It says, "I do not wish to speak, but I am here to answer any questions." Does council have any questions of Mr. John?
No, sir.
Recommendation of staff is to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Uh, move to approve this ordinance as written.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as set forth in caption above.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Uh, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the 21.3 acres track of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from light industrial district zoning to estate townhouse district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is also a public hearing, consideration of ordinance for zone change request from single-family residential, R-75, to Old Town Mixed Use 1, zoning district 0.180 acres, located at 331 North Charles Street, further identified as J.W. King Survey Abstract Number 696, being Lot 1, Block F of the Old Town Louisville addition as requested by Grover John, the property owner. The property is located with the Old Town Design District View at southwest corner Charles and West College Street and contains one residential dwelling. The site is currently zoned, single-family residential, and is recommended for rezoning the Old Town Zone, Old Town zoning plan. The owner is requesting OTMU 1 designation order to obtain reduced setbacks for future development plans. Recommendation, council approved the ordinance set forth. Question, I do not have any cards or any, uh, want to want to speak. Move to close public hearing. Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Durham.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Durham?
Move to approve as recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as recommended, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the .18 acre track of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from residential 7.5 district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use 1 district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Counselor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Mr. Assistant Form, at this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have any cards filled out. Anyone to speak? Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by council, being acted with one motion, no separate discussion, unless the council member assists or requests, or citizen requests removal of an item, the speaker card must be filled out, submitted to city secretary. Item six, have had a Councilman Grinna ask to have it pulled. We also have a speaker card on that asking for it to be pulled, so, uh, Councilman Vaughn, would you have a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item six?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, agenda minus item six.
I have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve consent agenda with the exception of item six.
Second.
A second by Councilman Grinna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, approval of marketing and operational agreement with utility service partners Private Label Inc., Doing Business as Service line warranties of America, and authorization for city manager of his designated to execute all related documents. At September 10th, 2012 workshop, a consensus to proceed with the discontinuation of the city's private sewer cleanup program was provided to staff. Therefore, the city will cease private residential sewer line cleaning services to clear sewer line stoppages effective March 1st, 2013. In addition, council directed staff to proceed with promoting the services of utility service partner Private Label Inc. Doing Business as Service Line Warranties of America. The National League of Cities and North Texas, North Central Texas Council of Governments has selected USP-SLWA as a preferred service provider to provide non-mandatory utility line warranties for both private residential water and sewer lines. The service is provided via monthly or annual charge for water or service or both. The marketing agreement is non-exclusive agreement that allows SLWA to forward letters and correspondence utilizing the city's name and logos to each residential unit. The city will not receive a fee from SWLA for execution of this agreement, however, however, the normal 12% fee will be credited as a customer discount. And, Mr. City Manager, my question is, this is strictly voluntary. No one has to participate in this if they choose not to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
This is just something if someone wants to take advantage of, they have the option to. It's nothing that'll be imposed on anyone for a fee or a charge.
Correct. They can opt for any other service provider that's out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Grinna, you want it pulled, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, before you do, I'm sorry, I got a speaker card. Let me get that, I'm sorry. Mr. Tom John, what, nope, here we go, I'm sorry. Tracy Daniels. Will please come forward and give your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Tracy Daniels. I live at 625 East Vista Ridge Mall Drive, apartment 1217. And I like the idea of what you guys are doing, and I commend you for doing it, but I just don't like the idea of, even though you're not forcing anybody to use this company, when the city states it, I don't like the idea, it's almost like an endorsement, and I don't think, I think if you remove those warnings, it would be a great thing to pass. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Grinna, I'm sorry, now go ahead.
All right, um, you know, this all started from the city stopping the service that we were providing to clean out sewer drains and stuff, which I'm all for, doing that, stopping that service from the city, 'cause we're just basically competing with the local plumbers and stuff, and that's what they can do. The reason I wanted this pulled, and the reason I'm voting against this, is that I do not think, like the gentleman just said, apparently we share the same view, that I don't think that a governing entity should be endorsing any one company. Now, yes, it is voluntary, but we're not, we're also telling everybody about it, that's the free advertising coming from us and stuff like that. I don't have a problem with this company getting out there, spending their money, sending flyers out to everybody, and advertising, putting in the paper, putting up billboards, whatever they want to do to do their own advertising, and compete with everybody else. But I encourage citizens to look at their insurance provider, see if they can get an override in here, 'cause what it comes down to is, the water side's 51 bucks a year and the sewer side is another 60 bucks, it's 111 bucks. If you're gonna do that, I'm sure you can get a pretty good policy from your own insurance person for that, you know, every year. How often do you have a problem with your sewer? It could happen at any time. Things can happen, you know, a serious clog. But this is for what's on your property, okay? So, or what's in your property line. So, just keep that in mind. I'm voting against it for those reasons, and I encourage you to talk to your own insurance provider. Thank you.
Any other council member, have you comments?
Uh, just a comment from me. Setting aside that National League of Cities and North Central Texas Council of Governments have both vetted this organization, I think if the city had the opportunity to interview a selection of providers for this service, and were able to identify one that would be willing to discount its fee 10% or more for our citizens, where the city itself has no financial benefit from that decision, then it's something that it would be prudent for us to do and prudent for us to offer to our citizens, so I'll be voting in favor of this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, um, just a quick thing. When we, when we look to remove the service, do the liability into competition with other plumbers and whatnot in the area, that makes, makes total sense to me. By the same token, I'd like to be able to find opportunities for our residents to benefit. So, I did, I reached out to my insurance agency, and I reached out to two other large name-brand insurance agencies that you would see. All three of them politely declined this type of coverage. They don't have it. Plain and simple. It's not part of their processes. They said I could maybe find somebody to independently do it, or that I should reach out to an organization, just like the one we're putting in the flyer. So, um, it's all well and good to say, we can probably get somebody to do that, but you've got to realize that the homeowner's insurance business is very refined, very focused on what it does, and getting outside of the box is not something they necessarily do. So, with that being said, I'm happy to have this out there and allow our residents to take a look at it, see if it makes sense for them.
Any other comment? entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item nine is a tabled item, consideration of final plat for FOPIN Louisville addition, a 1.57 acre parcel zone light industrial located at the southwest corner of Midway Road, west of Hopeford Prairie Road, with a requested variance to Louisville City Code Section 6-92 paving as requested by Bill Fuess owner. The 1.57 acre property is unplatted and zoned light industrial. The owners are proposing to market the property for an industrial or commercial use and have no immediate plans to develop the site. The owner previously applied for a variance through the general development ordinance, A, to waive the required street escrow for Midway Road and Hopeford Prairies Road. Since the September 17th council meeting, when this item was recently tabled, the owner has agreed to the staff recommendation per the 102212 letter included in the backup. Recommendation is the city council approve the final plat and variance for the FOPIN Louisville addition as set forth in the caption above, with a condition that the variance will be voided in the event the lot is combined with adjacent property through ownership plat or site plan. I do have a speaker card, uh, from Mr. Fuess. If you would, sir, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Fuess, 3129 Hanover, Dallas, 75225. I don't really have anything to add to what you just said, other than that that was, that was not just staff, uh, recommendation, that was P and Z approved. I think that those words were, was what was approved at the P and Z meeting, and that's what we're asking for the council to approve.
Okay, sir. All right.
Be happy to answer any question.
Counselor, any questions, Mr. Fuess?
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the requested variance as written.
Second.
Would, uh, Councilman Vaughn, would you make sure, if you would, in your motion, if you could do that as per the recommendation, though it says as written, but I think that special condition also needs to be stipulated in the motion.
Very well. I add to my motion, the stipulation that the property, that the variance is null and void if the property is adjoined with the, to the adjoining property. Does that do it?
All right, closer.
Can I second that, too?
Please, thank you very much.
Excuse me, is it also to approve the final plat?
Yes, it is, to approve the final plat.
Counselor?
So, just to be clear, the motion is to approve the final plat and the variance as stated in the recommendation?
Right, with the stipulation of the condition.
With the stipulation of...
With the stipulation that it be voided in the event that the lot is combined with the adjacent property through ownership plat or site plan.
Correct.
And seconded it.
So, we have a motion, excuse me, a motion by Councilman Vaughn, and a second by Councilman Grinna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner Vaughn, appreciate it. Item 10 is consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code, Chapter 6, Land Development, Section 6-144, screening between commercial and residential uses for LISD School South as requested by Glenn Engineering Corporation. Site was tabled at number 50 meeting council meeting in order to staff to obtain additional information. Louisville Independent School District, in 9th grade, 10th grade, at the southeast corner of Roundgold Road and Duncan Lane, at this time, they're proposing to construct a 49,500 square foot and auditorium located in the northern portion of the site, approximately 1,000 feet from the eastern property line, that abuts multi-family zoning in order to facilitate this quest, LISD seeking to renew the variance granted in 2009, allowing an approximately 175-foot span on 6-foot-high chain-link fence to re, remain in lieu of providing the required screening fence along the east property line of the site. The remainder of the screening fence complies with the ordinance. Recommendation is that approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore? Oh, excuse me, uh, I did have a speaker card here from Robert Holman, I'm sorry, Sir, Howman, and it says he will speak. So, if you could come forward, sir, give your name and address. You checked both, so I didn't know which one you wanted, whether you wanted to speak or not.
Good evening, my name is Robert Howman with Glenn Engineering, 105 Decker Court, Suite 910, Irving, Texas. Again, we just thank you for your consideration for approval tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
I'd like to thank the LISD for being responsive to our concerns, and at this point, I would like to move that we approve the variance for the screening fence set forth in the caption.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is consideration of an ordinance reducing the Texas Municipal Retirement System updated service credit benefit from 100% to 75%. One of the benefits provided under the City of Louisville's TMRS plan is an updated service credit, which is an optional benefit provision within the TMRS menu of plan design options that cities can adopt. For the fiscal year 2012-13 budget, the city reduced the USC from 100% to 75%, which resulted in a savings of $2,201. Recommendation is the city approved ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Counselman Grinna?
Um, just wanna, we, we had this discussion in the workshop, and wanted to make sure that the employees and citizens know that this is gonna be a change as of January 1. So, those employees that have been contributing up to that point will get their 100%, but the plan is changing as of January 1, and so any further from that point on will be 75% of their contribution, correct? All right. I move to approve this ordinance as presented.
Have a motion by Councilman Grinna to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Uh, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, counselor.
This is an ordinance authorizing and allowing, under the Act, governing the Texas Municipal Retirement System, updated service credits in said system on an annual basis for service performed by qualifying members of such system who are, who at the effective date of the allowance are members of the City of Louisville, providing for increased prior and current service annuities for retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees of the city, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counselor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of an entertainment district decorative outdoor lighting grant in amount not to exceed $27,500 to the Old Town Business Association. Approval of the Entertainment District Executive Outdoor Lighting Agreement. Approval of a fee waiver to the City of Louisville Code Section 2-201. Fees regarding building permit fees in amount of $180. Approval of supplemental appropriation in amount of $27,500 to the Hotel Motel Fund and authorization for the city manager or his designated to execute the agreement. Old Town Business Association submitted request on October 13th for assistance with a permanent outdoor building lighting program for the center district of Old Town. Currently, several buildings are lighted by the business owners and city lights and trees located along the right-of-way. Opposed program would provide a consistent appearance to all the buildings on both the northern side of Main Street. The Old Town Business Association asking for funding for the initial purchase of the lights and the installation. The Old Town Business Association then proposes that they will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the lights and monthly electrical costs. Entertainment district is a designated tourism destination, making enhancement of its attraction eligible for hotel motel funding. A proposed agreement for a grant in amount of $27,500 for the one-time purchase of lights and installation is recommended by staff. Staff also recommends a waiver of building permit fees and electrical services. A supplemental appropriation of Hotel Motel Fund balance in amount of $27,500 is also recommended. Recommendation, council approved the grant agreement and supplemental appropriation as set forth in the caption above. I have several cards here, no one wants to speak, but several people want to speak, did come and here in support. It's Mr. Bill Pack. Also in support is Lindsay Holliday, and Amanda Ferguson, and Kelly Blackall are all in, here and in support tonight. I would just like to say that I appreciate Old Town Business Association working with the city and doing this, and work considering, and being willing to consider taking on the burden of keeping it up and maintaining it as future years go on. I am definitely in support of this. Councilman Durham?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve, a second by Councilman Grinna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Once again, I'll thank Old Town Business Association for this. Reports. Nika?
Yes, sir. This past weekend, the Toyota of Louisville Railroad Park was the host of Dick's Lone Star Shootout Lacrosse Tournament. This was a wonderful event, brought teams in from, uh, out of town and out of state. We had over 100 teams, it was a well-organized event, it was a new sport for us to host out at the park, and it was a great event. We'll send you a follow-up report when we get all the details in on number of hotel stays and the success of the event.
I certainly want to commend you and your entire staff on all that, that you present out there at the, at the Toyota Louisville Railroad Park, 'cause every time I turn around and we have an event, I get a lot of comments from the people that used it and the people that came here from out of town, and how well they were treated, and how much they enjoyed it, and what a pleasure it was, and they look forward to coming back. So, we want to, if you will, pass that on to all your team members that work with you. Appreciate it. Chief? Linda? Chief Herbl?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody, as we're getting ready to approach the holiday season and the launch of the, the heavy... the holiday season and the launch of the, the heavy shopping rush to lock, take, and hide, that's a really simple crime prevention program designed to remind everybody to be sure and lock your car, and take your keys with you, hide your valuables, and try to take the things inside, or, you know, take them with you if at all possible, help reduces that risk of being auto burglary or auto theft. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I thought maybe you were going to give the late reports since Carol wasn't here tonight, weren't able to get an update, huh?
I'm not prepared on that one either, Mayor, but I will tell you about Holiday at the Hall, which is planned for December the 1st, Saturday, December the 1st. It's going to be held at the MCL Grand with Breakfast with Santa, starts at 8:00 a.m., will run until noon, bring all the kids out, and they can have their picture taken with Santa, and enjoy a really good pancake breakfast, and the proceeds of that event actually go to Casa. Also, that same day, we have the motorcycle toy run at 11:15. We have the Christmas parade that starts at 12:30, and the Old Town Business, Business Association is bringing back the stroll. That's the first time we've had the stroll in many, many years, and the stroll will be from 4:00 to 7:00. At 5:30, the mayor's going to come out with Santa, and he's going to push a button and light up our Christmas tree and lights along that you just approved along Main Street. So, it should be a great day, way to kick off the holidays and the great shopping experience we hope all of you have in Louisville. So, come out and enjoy it. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Clifford? You're just here to verify we got money to pay for all that, right? Good man, you do good work. Thank you, Clifford. Mr. Ferris? Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Grinnon?
Just a word of caution, holiday season with increased jubilee, also, there's an increase in depression amongst people. Keep your eyes open, talk to people, look for the signs. The alternative of what some people may be contemplating should never be a choice.
Counselor Gilmore?
Coming up on Tuesday, November 27, and again on Tuesday, December 4, the Community Development Block Grant will have their public hearings. These are annual. These funds are primarily used to assist low and modern income persons, households, or areas with housing programs, community economic development, and/or social services. So, these are great opportunities for public input. And lastly, several of the council up here attended the Texas Municipal League this past week, their annual conference, and the job of the TML is, put it succinctly, maintaining local control. So, I wanted to thank three folks, city staff, who actually presented at the event, and they did Louisville proud. Melinda Goller gave an HR overview, James Kunkie, social networking, and of course, Nika Reinicki with our planning overview. And I heard great things from all three, and really appreciate the leadership that this city staff has with the Texas Municipal League.
Thank you. Mr. Keen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ferb?
MCL Grand has a lot of things going on, I'll try to give you a snapshot here. Always have art exhibits going on in the lobby court, the lobby, the corridors, and the gallery, so anytime you're there, you want to check that out. We've got, let me skip down here, on the same day with Holiday at the Hall, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Louisville Civic Corral is doing their holiday concert. That'd be a great way to, to wrap up that evening after the stroll, just head over to the MCL and, and listen to corral. They're going to be doing a mix of, of different types of holiday music, and, let's see what else I had here, hold on just a minute. We've got Citizens Police Academy will have their graduation ceremony December 6 from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. in the recital halls, is that correct? And the Medical Center of Louisville is having their Emerging Leaders graduation in the Performance Hall and Gallery that same day, but just a little bit earlier in the day, starting from 2 and going to 6:00 p.m. That's December 6. And then a few more, got to get to them here. Forestwood Middle School Choirs are doing a holiday concert on Tuesday, December 13 from 4:00 to 9:00, seems like a long time, and hope they hold up, and Sunday, the 16th from 2:00 to 4:00, so a little bit shorter one there. And then we've got Production Theater Company doing Pump Boys and Dynets, that's Friday, December 14 from 2:30, well, at 2:30 and 7:30, and Saturday, December 15, 2:30 and 7:30. Did I say 2:30 and 7:30 on both? I'm reading this so fast, I don't remember what I said. And then finally, a couple of others, Texas Family Musicals is doing It's a Wonderful Life, that's doing that on Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday at 7:30. There's also a matinee on Saturday at 2:30. And the last and, and not least by any means, the Three Redneck Tenors, and if anybody saw them last year, you're going to want to go back, and if you didn't, tell your friends, because you can probably convince them to go, but they'll be repeating their Christmas spectacular show, and that's at the MCL Grand, and I don't have my times on that one, so, but check into it, okay? That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselman Vaughn?
Nothing, Mayor.
Counselor? Julie? Eli? Sir, once again, we appreciate you being here tonight, we appreciate your service. Thank you very much. I do want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very happy and wonderful Thanksgiving. I know we all have our own special things that we're, we're thankful for. One thing I want to say, I'm thankful to have my wife back home. She, I want to give her a little kudos, for the last two weeks, she volunteered to go up to the New York area to work in the relief efforts for the hurricane there. Some of the stuff she, pictures and stuff she brought home, and some stories and stuff she brought home are just really touching and amazing of what the devastation that they've been through. I know she is glad to be home, but I think I'm even more glad to have her back home. So, I'm sure y'all have several stories like that of your own. Wish everyone a very happy holiday, a Thanksgiving, and I hope you enjoy, and come out to our Holiday at the Hall and our Christmas parade. With that, and in accordance to get Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, legal issues related to Camelot Landfills, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, but now convened into closed session.